Call the September 28th, 2020 City Council Committee to hold an order. The clerk will call the roll.
O'Riverlo?
Present.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Present.
Frank?
Present.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Bradcliffe?
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present.
Full house, that's great. If it's okay with the council, we have several speakers tonight who wish to speak in public comment, but we also have as the first scheduled item on the agenda, a life-saving recognition for the Belvidere Fire Department, and because we have families and children here, if it's all right with everybody, we'll do that first. Everybody good with that? Okay, at that point, I would have the fire folks come on up for your presentation.
It's on. Thank you, thanks Mayor. The Belvidere Fire Department believes in the recognition of its members, their actions, and their efforts in service to the community. In keeping with this belief, the department is recognizing the outstanding efforts of firefighter Dan Drawl and Travis Tangi that occurred in the early morning hours of August 15th, 2020.
With me here is Travis Tangi, Dan Drawl, and Captain Burdick.
Captain Burdick's gonna come up and he's gonna tell about that incident.
Good evening, everybody. Captain Burdick with C-Shift. I'm gonna recap kinda what went on that morning, but first, I just want to let C-Shift members know how fortunate I am. I'm proud I am to be your captain, and I really appreciate all the hard work that everybody does. So again, thank you for that, and you're a talented group of individuals, so I appreciate that. On August 15th, at 5:24 in the morning, we responded to the 700 block of Whitman for smoke inside of a multifamily apartment building. First-in fire and police units initially found nothing showing from the outside. Quickly upon doing an exterior 360 and then going inside, we did notice smoke pushing into the hallway and out of a second-story window. Belvidere Police did a great job in evacuating tenants from the non-fire buildings while maintaining the integrity of the fire apartment. Engine 101, which would be firefighter Drawl and firefighter Tangi, were tasked with suppression, and as they were getting ready to advance the line and make entry into the apartment, they did hear an individual calling for help, so firefighter Tangi immediately forced entry up onto the apartment, retrieved the victim, and brought him out to a more tenable environment in the hallway. Again, then with assistance from firefighter Drawl and the police, they were able to get the victim outside to the lifeline ambulance and get a more definitive medical attention from there. Engine 102 Company was also tasked with additional search and rescue to make sure no one else was inside of the building. So with that, there was only no firefighter injuries, one injury from the burn victim. I believe at this time, he is recovering and back to work, so that is good news. With that, I would like to commend all agencies that responded to this incident. Everybody showed up ready to work and completed their assigned tasks. So we have auto aid agreements in place that allowed us as incident commanders to be proactive on the fire ground instead of less reactive. So with this being said, I'd like to give special recognition to firefighter Drawl and firefighter Tangi for their swift actions in rescuing our fire victim from this early Saturday morning fire. They both showed grit and determination while working inside of the structure and were able to maintain composure to extinguish a fire during and after the rescue. So the early morning and location of this call being a multifamily is one we trained for, but we never want to see occur due to its great potential for human life loss. At this time, 5:30 in the morning, most people are usually home and asleep. So the first-in actions of the Belvidere Fire 101 and 102 Companies and Belvidere Police averted any chance of significant life loss. So again, congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you, Captain.
I'm gonna read from the fire victim himself, from the fire victim, to the Belvidere Fire Department. "It's a little intimidating to write a note of thanks to the people who saved your life. What do you say? A simple thanks just seems far too little, and anything more runs the risk of sounding insincere. So I will simply say this: The people being honored here are not only everyday heroes, nor only Belvidere's heroes, but they're my heroes. On behalf of my family, my friends, and myself, thank you. I'm sorry that I couldn't be there in person, but the simple fact that I'm alive to be able to go to work is just a small testament to the monumental heroism you displayed. Your honors are so very much deserved. Signed, David Ringwald." And continuing with that, Mr. Ringwald has recovered from his burn injuries, as Captain Burdick had said, after six weeks. He has returned to work. Fire stories like this do not happen often, but when they do, our guys are ready. As the fire chief, I am extremely grateful for the hard work and dedication that our department members bring each and every day to this most honorable of professions. As a result of firefighters Drawl and Tangi's actions that morning, I am awarding the Distinguished Service Medal to Dan Drawl and the Life Saving Medal to Travis Tangi."
Daniel?
Thank you. Good work. Travis Tangi, here's a life-saving award for you. Thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it. You know, always the best part, Dan, like you to say a few words, okay?
I'll make it brief. I wanna start out, council, mayor, thank you for your continued support in the fire department. Without you guys, this is impossible. Chief, for extensive training program, it makes us also possible, our leadership also, the guys that I work with every day. These guys are awesome. As you can tell, what happened, boys in blue, we appreciate you guys being there at all times helping us out. We reciprocate, too. For my wife, biggest supporter of all. So these guys have to deal with me for 24, she's gotta deal with me for the other 48. So I applaud her for that. Thank you again.
Travis?
Thank you, chief. I just wanted to talk about two topics. First, on behalf of our shift, our fire department, we wish speedy recovery, really glad to hear that he's back to work, to the gentleman from the apartment fire, so that's great news. And secondly, I'd just like to speak about some of the other members that were there that day. It starts at the top, chief. I believe one of the biggest things, you've had a point of emphasis with us since you became chief, was training. And calls like this, you fall back on your training, you fall back on your muscle memory, so thank you, chief. Our shift commander, Captain David Burdick, I've had the privilege, starting my career on C-Shift. Captain Burdick was a blue shirt at the time, and he was one of my mentors as a probationary firefighter, and can't say enough about him. Very happy that he moved to the ranks and came back to our shift as a captain, so thank you, cap. Engineer Kevin Fox, for those of you that don't know, the engineer position is kinda the unsung hero at the fire ground, and a good engineer's job is never done, and we had a good one that day. Engineer Kevin Fox, thank you for all you do. And then the other engine crew, 102, without the support, with those guys backing us up, searching every apartment in that building, Dan and I aren't able to do what we did on the inside, so props to you guys, too. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's why folks in this community can sleep well at night. So under public comment, as I said, we have a number of folks that wanted to share with us this evening. First up is Mr. Andrew Race to talk to us about the Council on Aging fundraiser. Mr. Race?
I wanna say thank you for the opportunity to let the public know about Autumn Is in the Air. It's a fundraiser for the Boone County Council on Aging, okay? It's gonna be on October the 13th, that's a Tuesday. It's from 3:00 to 6:00 o'clock at the Belvidere Moose. And basically, it's a surf-and-turf dinner where you go and you pick it up and carry it out, okay, between 3:00 and 6:00. It features bacon-wrapped pork medallion, shrimp, baked potato, coleslaw, glazed carrots, roll, and butter, okay? Tickets are $15 each, okay? The Council on Aging, you know, is an important part of our community. Your support, we greatly appreciate it. I wanna say thank you to the mayor for relying us to come down and talk about this, okay? If you have any questions, if somebody wants a ticket, I have tickets in my pocket, I can sell you, okay? So it's up to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Race. Next up, we have Mr. Clinton Morris that wants to talk to us about fees and tax abatement. Mr. Morris, good to see you. Haven't seen you in a while.
So I wanted to address the council first and foremost here, because it's up to you to decide what you're gonna do about impact fees and the abatement and also waiving fees, inspection fees. I was an alderman for 12 years. I was in the mid-'90s at the forefront of impact fees. Impact fees were a benefit to education in our community, and it was because of the rampant growth that went unchecked, and it forced us to build schools, it forced a burden on our education system. And you may recall, some of you may be aware, that the growth corridor from Crystal Lake to Naperville, that was a terrible detriment on the property taxpayers, because roughly 68, 70% of property taxes go towards education in communities, in our communities also. Maybe a little bit less, but it was at that time, I believe, 68%. So education, making sure that we addressed education in our community, that was the driver behind impact fees. We wanted to ensure that people that were coming in here to develop land, develop property in our community, that they contributed, they contributed to the burden that they were causing on our schools. And believe you me, we had many of the same people that were in the audience up here before you. Many of those players were back then in the mid-'90s, and they were claiming that we can't afford to do that. We can't afford it, and we don't wanna pay it. Well, the fact is, they have been in place since then, and they can afford it, and they have afforded it. But what they see is they see an opportunity, and it's called greed. And greed is a funny thing, because greed will make you turn and look the other way, and you don't have any responsibility to anybody, the taxpayer, the residents, the schoolchildren. You turn your back on them, because you want to profit and keep all the profits for yourself. So that was the history, a little bit behind impact fees. Now, I understand that you wanna do a tax abatement and waive city inspections for a multifamily project? A multifamily residential project? Who thinks that's a good idea in this community, that we need more, we need to take taxpayer funding, and we need to abate developers with an incentive to build here? If the project is worthy, if it's worthy, then it'll stand on its own economic merit. That's just the rules of economics. Why in the world would a council or anybody else want to make sure that you put another burden on the community by waiving impact fees, abating taxes, and then, as I understand it, it's up for discussion tonight to have the inspector, the inspection waive the fees on the inspection, on inspections for them? How many residents have built a home here? How many residents, how many residents can come in and they can build a house and say, "Would you please abate my taxes? Would you waive my inspection fees because I wanna build?" That's insanity. Why would you do that? Who's the driver of this? Where did this come from? Did it come from the council? Did it come from the mayor? Is that who it came from? It was put on the agenda, and the council is unfortunately saddled with it. It actually should've been, it actually should've been just disregarded out of hand, because it's a terrible burden and unfair for the taxpayer. You want the taxpayer to foot the bill for special interests. That's what you want. That's what you're saying. Yeah, it's a good idea that we allow developers to come in here and claim poor mouth so that we can go ahead and have the rest of the taxpayers fund these special projects. And the only people that benefit are those that put the money in their wallet, and then they leave, and they leave us behind with the burden. Impact fees were put in place to ensure that they paid something towards the burden of their development. And many, many communities recognize that east of here along the growth corridor long before we did, and we had to fight tooth and nail then. Mayor Peterson was the mayor, and, you know, they packed, they packed, they packed City Hall, they packed the meeting place here, and they told, you know, the aldermen, "What a terrible idea this is. How unfair this is that we have to contribute to our community in education." But we prevailed, and we imposed them, and they paid them. And education prospered. Education did. The city didn't prosper. The city, the city never claimed one nickel of those impact fees. Those went to education in our communities to ensure that we were able to provide and keep up with the burden of that excessive growth. And at that time, it was huge, but to take those fees off now and open the doors is crazy. So... I know when I was alderman, the process went something like this. The aldermen in the ward were talked to by developers, many of the council members were visited, were called by developers or realtors, and they said, "Well, we'd like to get you on board." And of course, they went after, first, they went after the ward aldermen that the projects, they wanted, they wanted to do the projects in. That's what they did. And then, of course, it's divide and conquer. If you can get two people to say, "Okay," then aldermen, obviously, "Well, what do you think about it when you come to a meeting? What do you think about it? Oh, I think it's a good idea. It's in your ward." Well, then, I guess it's a good idea. And that's kind of the bad part about politics. Many of these discussions, many of the discussions are done behind the scenes, or they're done over the phone. They're not done in the public purview. The vote is done in the public purview. So who looks out after the taxpayers? Who looks out after the taxpayers on this deal? The mayor's the one who presented this to the council. If it was such a great idea, you know, and it was a wonderful idea, you know, why didn't they go after these, why didn't they go after these a long time ago? Why do we have, why do you guys have to hurry? Why do you have to make a decision so quickly? You know, I always felt that I was under the gun making these decisions. But you represent, you're the only, you are the only protection that taxpayers have. The developers, the realtors, they didn't elect you. They didn't put you in office here. Your constituents put you in office. Pay attention. Your constituents, they're the ones that elected you. That's who you work for. You don't work for any special interest, nor should you. And if you do, you oughta be ashamed of yourself. You represent the taxpayers. This is not a good deal for taxpayers' money, and if anybody is telling you that it is, then I would question what motives they have. Is this driven by something behind the scenes? Is that what it is? So I would implore you to do the right thing. Impact fees are here for a reason. If we're that flush in cash that we can waive inspection fees, and that we can abate taxes, then where in the hell is the money for the taxpayer, the average guy? Who's representing him? The only people that can represent him are you, the aldermen. That's it. It's not up to Mike Drelle, the attorney. It's not really up to Mike Chamberlain. You're the vote. You're the ones who vote. You guys are the ones who the taxpayers have entrusted, they've entrusted, that you look out for them, not for some developer, not for a realtor, not for anybody who's gonna make a profit on the taxpayers' back. So I would ask you to keep that in mind before you waive any of these fees. And remember that the taxpayers are the ones that elected you. Your constituents, probably not one of these special interest individuals that have been, that have came up here in front of you and claimed that we need, they need you to do this for them, not one of them probably has voted for anybody in this room. But they certainly don't supersede the taxpayer. So I wanna thank you for your time. It's been a while since I've sat up here, and I know it's not an easy decision, and I know sometimes that aldermen have a lot on their plate, but I'm asking you to think about it and do the right thing, and remember who you work for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. So I received a letter today in the regular mail from the Home Builders Association of the Greater Rockford Area, which I will read into the record. Dear Mr. Chamberlain, thank you for the opportunity to address the Belvidere City Council Committee of the whole, meeting on September 14th. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to the members of the city council and to answer your questions about stimulating new construction in Belvidere, Illinois. These collaborative meetings will benefit the building industry in the city of Belvidere. Following the discussion that evening, the members of the Home Builders Association who were present at the meeting, and I presented the policy issues discussed to the general membership of the Home Builders Association of the Greater Rockford Area on September 17th for their input. The following are our responses to the policies discussed at the meeting on September 14th. We wish to affirm that the collection of school impact fees should be eliminated or at least suspended for a number of years. This is based upon the housing start data for Belvidere and the Boone County area following the housing recession which began in 2006, resulting in a dramatic drop-off in new home permits, which unfortunately has continued to 2020. The demographic data for Illinois, including the declining birth rate and outmigration of Illinois residents, also indicates the potential need and/or demand for new houses in Belvidere and across northern Illinois, sluggish as are other areas of the nation which are still recovering. We wish to affirm that the sewer and water feeds need to be eliminated or at the very least significantly reduced. In the current absence of building, the existing excess plant capabilities are never going to be used before the infrastructure becomes obsolete. New construction incentives to hook up to the systems will increase the users, who will then share on the responsibility for replacing these facilities in the future. No one saw this coming, that as a result of the housing recession in northern Illinois, the sewer and water plants have been overdesigned for capacity that will not be used. We wish to affirm that eliminating building permit fees is a good offer. If the city will waive them to stimulate development, then we support that policy, but of more concern to the builders is the timely delivery of building inspections. If a fee waiver increases the time from when an inspection is requested to when it is made, then the savings may not be worth the cost in construction delays. The builders believe that some of these delays could be eliminated by permitting virtual inspections with guidelines established by the Building Department. Due to COVID-19 exposure concerns, virtual inspections are becoming more common. We wish to affirm that rebating the city's share of property taxes to the new home buyer for a number of years is an incentive that has worked in other cities to stimulate home buying. We support that policy. We wish to affirm that these policy changes must apply to all future building and development within the timeframe established. These are responses to the policy areas discussed at December 14th City Council Committee meeting. Please share them with members of the city council. All of these changes will be positive for stimulating construction. The more that are implemented, the greater the incentive for building new homes. When these policy changes are made, we believe that will stimulate new interest in building, new homes in Belvidere, Illinois. Sincerely yours, Dennis Sweeney, who is the Executive Vice President of the Home Builders Greater Rockford Area. And these are expressing viewpoints strictly of theirs. Next up, we have Ms. Neely Erickson from the Government Affairs Director of the Illinois Realtors. Neely, floor is yours.
My name is Neely Erickson, and I am the Government Affairs Director for the Illinois Realtors. I am here on behalf of the Belvidere Board of Realtors and their more than 300 members to express our appreciation of the council for considering the repeal of impact fees under Section 15.25 of the Belvidere Municipal Code. As you are aware, impact fees were designed to offset municipal operation costs when experiencing unprecedented growth. However, growth within the city of Belvidere has stalled. This is not a unique challenge to the city of Belvidere. Other local governments have experienced the same difficulties and have considered various approaches to addressing the issue. The most common and promising modification that can jump-start new construction is the elimination of impact fees. To name a few, local governments that have capitalized on this advantage are the Village of Poplar Grove, Genoa, McHenry County, and many local municipalities within McHenry County, such as the Village of Richmond, Hebron, and City of McHenry. Removal of impact fees has allowed these local governments to become more competitive in attracting new residential construction, and it is working. The imbalance between supply and demand is squeezing entry-level housing the hardest in Belvidere, especially for first-time homebuyers, millennials, and baby boomers who want to downsize. The housing inventory is incredibly restrictive. Simply put, there are not enough homes on the market for buyers who are interested in purchasing. We desperately need more housing options. So this evening, before coming here, I checked the multiple listing service for active and available properties that do not have any pending transactions on them for Belvidere, and I have provided the clerk with a copy of this for the record. There are 51 properties for sale with a mailing address in Belvidere, and upon review of those listings, you will see that there are less than 30 homes that are available that are within the city of Belvidere's boundaries. And these homes range between $60,000 and $300,000. Belvidere is positioned to make supply readily available and benefit from long-term property tax growth, but it must act expeditiously. The passage of this ordinance will allow for controlled growth by ensuring a cost-effective building environment for previously plotted lots within the city of Belvidere. Furthermore, single-family construction is not the only type of affordable housing that is in demand. Rental housing has followed suit, and vacancy rates are extremely low. The potential for quality rental development is paramount to providing increased, safe, and affordable rental housing within the city of Belvidere for professional working individuals, millennials, transitioning baby boomers, and families that will hopefully move into long-term home ownership. Everything about housing markets is local. That is why it is vitally important this council- That is why it is vitally important this council takes the lead on addressing housing and inventory issues to produce smart growth and remove housing barriers within regulations. Again, Realtors appreciate the council for taking a hard look at what appropriate levels the impact fees should play in new construction, and we look forward to a positive outcome for the city of Belvidere, its residents, families, and renters. Thank you for considering our position.
Thank you, Neely. And there, we have both sides of the conversation, so we will move along with tonight's agenda. Since we already handled our life-saving recognition, and again, kudos to the Belvedere Fire Department. Their training regimen and their dedication to service saves lives. Next up, we have the Belvedere Police Department with the Gordon Neese $1,500 donation. Deputy Chief? Sure, wherever you're comfortable.
Good evening, Alderman, Mr. Mayor. We have two requests tonight. The first one is a request to approve an accepted donation. July 2nd, Chief Woody presented, and you approved, accepting a donation of $1,500 from the Gordon Neese family. And tonight, we're requesting to use that $1,500 that was previously approved to help complete the first stage of our patrol office rehab project. We already have other money from a previous grant that we're using as well. The project's going to include additional storage units, cabinets, countertops, et cetera. The motion is to approve to spend $1,500 donation from Gordon Neese and Linda Neese for the Patrol Rehab Project.
I have a motion of that effect. I'll second that. Frank, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Avrillo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bradcliffe?
Huddy.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. The second request that we have tonight is a motion to accept a $50,000 donation to assist in the purchase of body worn cameras for the Belvidere Police Department. The donor for this wishes to remain anonymous. The Belvidere Police Department command staff have been testing and evaluating body worn cameras, and we're in that initial stage at this point, but the money has come forward. So the body worn cameras are considering, are in a range of $100,000 to $380,000. There's a significant cost difference from each one, and the testing process is going to be critical to which one will we choose. After we've had a chance to consider all of the brands, we will bring forward all of the bids to the council for consideration. The motion is that we would request to approve accepting the $50,000 donation to assist in the purchase of the body worn cameras for the Belvidere Police Department.
I have a motion of that. I'll make that motion, Your Honor. Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Yes, Alderman Porter.
Well, I just want to say that, you know, I've spoke about this before, we talked about this before, and I'm in favor of body cameras. I think they're a good idea for both sides. They protect the police officers who are being blamed for certain things that, you know, they may not be guilty of, and that type of thing, and also protects the citizens. So I think they're a good idea at this point.
Any other comments before we... Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the motion, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Bradcliffe?
Huddy.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Avrillo?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion's approved unanimously. Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Thank you.
Next up, under Number Three, Finance and Personnel and Finished Business, there is none to conduct this evening. Which brings us to Item Four, Finance and Personnel. New business with us, we have Sickich Audit Review. Fred, would you like to come forward and make your presentation? Could you see Mr. Lance?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. It's up to you. If you want, I did prepare a presentation this evening, Mr. Mayor, to put on the screen, if anybody wants that, because I know some people can't do it right now. Not a problem. So, good. Well, you all have your hard copies in front of you, so work off the hard copies. And for those of you that might be listening along and participating remotely, I'll make sure I give out the page numbers as we cover anything, so. On behalf of Sickich Audit Review, I'd like to thank the mayor and the members of the city council for inviting me here this evening to present the information resulting from our audit of the city as of and for your fiscal year ended April 30th, 2020. As a result of our audit, we've issued six reports, I believe three or four of which are before you for your review and approval this evening. Out of those six reports, there's the annual financial report for the city, which includes your consolidated year-end financial report that's required by the Grant Accountability and Transportation Act with the state of Illinois now to be filed and audited as part of your annual audit, so that is included in there. You have two fiduciary component units that are included in the city's audit, the police pension fund and the firefighters' pension fund. And I'm glad they all left before they wanted to start asking questions about the status of those pension funds, so. And then you have a discreetly presented component unit, the Ida Public Library, included in the city's report. In addition to the audit report then, we've issued our communication to those charged with governance, which is to the members of the city council. We've also issued a separate management letter for the city as required by compiled statutes for posting on the city's website. We've also issued a separate management letter just for the Ida Public Library. We felt we had some issues that were best addressed directly to the Library Board of Trustees, so we did issue a separate letter to the Library Board of Trustees. We've also issued our report on our examination of compliance with Public Act 85-1142, which is your TIF compliance for your two outstanding TIF districts. And last but certainly not least, we prepared the State Comptroller Annual Financial Report to be filed with the State Comptroller's Office. The city was not required to undergo a single audit of federal expenditures this year because you expended less than $750,000 in federal funding. In the future, you may be subject to that, especially with some of the cares and cures funding that is available to the state of Illinois to certain entities that we've discussed, Mr. Mayor. If that does open up to the city, and the city spends greater than $750,000 in that one year, that could trigger a single audit of federal expenditures during that particular fiscal year for the city. We're very pleased to present to the mayor and the members of the city council, if you've flipped with me then in the audit report, since I won't put it up on the screen. So if you have the annual financial report in front of you, this would be on page number one of the annual financial report, which is the independent auditor's report. We're very pleased to present to the mayor and the members of the city council a clean, unmodified opinion on your financial statements. Our opinion notes that your financial statements present fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and that they're free of any material misstatement. You may note on page number two, there's an additional paragraph this year called "The Change in Accounting Principle." The city implemented two new pronouncements by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board as part of the current year audit. Specifically, Gatsby Statement Number 83 on Asset Retirement Obligations caused a little bit of a change to the water fund and the accounting for some of the wells and the retirement of those wells in the future in the water fund. Worked very closely with the Public Works Department and the city engineers in determining that and recording that liability for the city. And then also the city, as we note there, implemented Gatsby Statement 84 this year, which just changed the police and fire pension funds to component units now, and they're reported as fiduciary component units of the city, getting ready for those assets to be transferred to the statewide pension plans within the next one to two years. Behind that, you'll see our report on internal control and other matters in accordance with what we call government auditing standards. So on page number four, we had to issue another opinion this year because the city did expend greater than $500,000 of state and federal dollars. So that triggered a requirement through that GATA, the Grant Accountability and Transparency Act here in the state of Illinois. So on page number four, you see we have our internal control over financial reporting. We're very pleased to note to the mayor and the members of the city council that we had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the overall internal control structure of the city. One thing I will point out, though, if you look at the very first paragraph on page number four, this report does not include the Ida Public Library. So the library and any comments related to library would not be included in this. Instead, it's in a separate document submitted to the library and the Library Board of Trustees. So again, the city has a very clean internal control structure, no material weaknesses, and no significant deficiencies in the overall control environment. On page five, under Compliance and Other Matters, we note that, excuse me, we did not identify any issues of non-compliance with any federal laws, grants, or contracts that could have a material impact on the overall city's financial statements. Overall, a very, very clean, unmodified opinion for the city, both from an audit standpoint and a generally accepted government auditing standpoint. In addition, for the two TIF districts, we've issued clean, unmodified examination opinions on the two TIF districts, noting that the spending within the TIF districts was in accordance with Illinois compiled statutes. Continuing on with the annual financial report, Mr. Mayor, just a few words if the time permitting. Turning our attention to pages number six and seven of that report. So if you go past the pages that are paginated with the MDA, although I really hate to skip over that management discussion analysis. That's really, in my opinion, right after page number five, probably the best part of this report. If you get through nothing else in this document, get through that management discussion and analysis. It's 12 pages long. It's written by your chief financial officer. It does a great job explaining what transpired in the city the last year from a financial standpoint, and more importantly, compares last year with the year before to help a reader understand what transpired during those two fiscal years. Very, very well-written management discussion and analysis. I'm not going to go over it. Instead, I'll encourage you all to take a gander through it. But more importantly, as you meet with residents, taxpayers, voters, anyone who's interested in the finances of the city, please by all means, share that management discussion and analysis with them. I think they'll find it very, very useful reading. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Mayor, you do put a copy of this up on the city's website.
We do.
So someone can access that right on the city's website to take a gander through that. I think they'll find it to be very, very useful reading, so. But if you turn with me to pages number six and seven now of the Statement of Net Position, again, this is a consolidated statement of net position. So this is prepared on what we call the Economic Resources Measurement Focus and the Full Accrual Basis of Accounting. Just a couple of items I wanted to bring to the mayor and the council's attention. For this last year, if you focus on the first two columns there, which are your governmental activities, so think of your general fund and motor fuel tax and other funds like that. The business-type activities, the next column, is primarily your water and sewer operations. To come up with this consolidated total for the city, and then you see the Ida Public Library reported by itself in what we call a discreetly presented component unit presentation. But focusing on those first two or three columns, you can see the city ended up the year with just over $89 million in total assets between your business-type activities and your governmental activities. You ended up the year with about $51 million in total liabilities, the majority of those being long-term operating obligations related to the police and fire pension and the city's other post-employment benefit plan, as we'll see in just a moment. The city has no bonded debt outstanding and a very, very low level of debt outstanding related to one tax increment financing district. So again, a very, very low debt burden right now for the city overall. If you look on page number seven, which is your equity or your net position, the first line is the net invested in capital assets, and you see the city has about just shy of $58 million invested in its overall capital assets within the city, and that includes your infrastructure capital assets. Below that, you see restricted net position. That's where an outside entity is telling you what you can spend those dollars are. So for example, the restriction for highways and streets is primarily your motor fuel tax money that can only be spent on repairs for highway and street improvements, so. Your unrestricted net position deficit, you can see, is at about $26.9 million. As we've noted historically, this is primarily due to the long-term obligations related to the police pension plan, the fire pension plan, and the retiree health insurance plan. As of April 30th, 2020, and remember, the police and fire pension plans within April 30th year end, they had a pretty tough march in April. If you all think back to your own investment portfolios perhaps, or what happened in the investment market, as soon as COVID-19 hit, we saw the equity markets decline anywhere from 20% to 30%. That was a direct decline in the equities on the police and fire pension plan. So the net pension liabilities for the police and fire pension plan at the end of the year were about $15.6 million and $12.7 million respectively. Right there is $27 million, just a little over $28 million in long-term liabilities. If you take those liabilities out right there, you'd be in a positive unrestricted net position and your governmental activities at the end of the year. In addition to that, you have an OPEB obligation of about $9.3 million and an IMF obligation of only $500,000. A net pension liability for IMF of only $500,000. Remember, IMF measured as of December 31st, didn't have the decline in the market until March, so. I think we'll see that decline on the IMF side perhaps, but certainly not to the extent that we saw with police and fire. So overall, if you look at those long-term operating liabilities, and the city of Bel, excuse me, the city of Belvidere is no different than any other major city in Illinois with these pension obligations, so we see this pretty much across the board. Overall then, your business-type activities, you can see you did report a positive unrestricted net position for the water and sewer funds at the end of the fiscal year. If you turn your attention to the next page, page number eight, if any of the constituents ever asks you that burning question, what is the total cost of providing services to the constituency? You'll see that in the very first column on page number eight, under the Total Expenses column. For the year ended April 30th, 2020, the total cost of your general governmental activities was about $22.7 million. The total cost of the water and sewer activities was about $6.2 million. The water and sewer costs declined by about $100,000 over last year. The governmental activity costs increased by about $2 million last year. However, your general fund expenditures actually went down. The increase was all in the year-end adjustment due to the police and fire pension plans, and that decline in the equities that we talked about in March and April of 2020. So if you remove those from the equation, your expenses were pretty much flat with last year, or very little increase with last year. Turning our attention to the next page, page number nine, on that same document. If you look about five lines up from the bottom, you'll see that change in net position. And again, you did have a decline in net position of your governmental activities primarily due to the equity activity within the police and fire pension funds. You do see a line, the third line up from the bottom, called Prior Period Adjustment. Please note that had nothing to do with the city. If you follow that line over, that was an adjustment, a prior period adjustment over in the library to adjust the value of some of their investments that they had outstanding in one of their trust funds with the library. Turning my attention to page number 10. So those first two statements we just looked at gives a very, very long-term perspective on the city and the city's finances. This next page, page number 10, gives a very short-term picture of the city's finances. This is prepared on what we call a Current Financial Resources Measurement Focus and the Modified Accrual Basis of Accounting. This is telling us not what our long-term equity might be, but our short-term cash position. I like to call fund balance on page 10, how much do we have left to fund next year's budget after we've paid this year's bills? That's the best measure you can have of fund balance in your general fund. You can see at the end of the year, as of April 30th, 2020, the general fund had a very good fund balance. You ended up the year with about $10.3 million in unassigned fund balance, which is about 61% of your expenditures. You have a target fund balance policy of somewhere between three months and six months of general fund expenditures, which I think you'll find is a very good policy to have during these challenging times, Mr. Mayor. When we start seeing some of our elastic or cyclical revenue streams going down, that's what our fund balances are there for, is to help us weather some of those storms and going through those. So we commend the city for having a three- to six-month fund balance policy. You see there's only one fund that reported a deficit there on page 10, and it's a very small deficit, in the amount of a little over $2,000. That was for Special Service Area Number Three, I believe, the Farmington Special Service Area. And that's just due to a timing difference in terms of when some of the costs were incurred there versus when the Special Service Area tax comes in to cover those costs, so. Very, very minor point from that standpoint. Turning our attention to page number 12 then, time permitting. Page number 12 is the current income statement or the short-term income statement. Now remember, I said that first income statement we looked at with total expenses? That was the total cost of providing services to the constituency, including those long-term operating costs and the impact of those pensions and depreciation of facilities such as City Hall. What you see on page 12 is again, just current inflows and current outflows. Think of your checkbook and how your checkbook operates. The city's checkbook is in pretty good shape as of April 30th, 2020. In the current fiscal year, you did have an excess of about $2.4 million. You transferred out $1.8 million of that, as you can see, for future capital purposes and to support your non-major governmental funds. Overall then, you did have a current positive change in fund balance in your general fund of about $571,000. So you have two competing financial pictures here, and you're probably saying, well, Mr. Lance, can you tell us which one is the correct one? This one tells us we're doing very good. The other one says we have a few challenges. They're both telling us exactly what their intent is. From a short-term standpoint, the city's doing very well. You have a very good fund balance policy, and you're operating the city very well and balancing budgets on an annual basis. What you're being challenged with are some of the long-term impacts of the pension changes that have been brought about in the state of Illinois that unfortunately you don't have much control over. Remember, the state legislature grants the pension benefits and determines how much those pension benefits are, but then tells you how to fund those pension benefits, so. That is a challenge that we have here within Illinois, which is why most communities like yours are reporting those unrestricted net position deficits. The last item I had on my agenda to cover, Mr. Mayor, was on page number 16 of the report. So we looked at short-term for the general fund. We looked at long-term for governmental activities. This is long-term for your water and sewer funds. And as you can see, overall, in the water and sewer funds, you had an operating income before depreciation of about $1.1 million. But then you have depreciation expense of about $1.7 million. You see that about halfway down the page. So that resulted in an operating loss of about $558,000. What that tells readers is that perhaps you're not... What that tells readers is that perhaps you're not recovering the cost of some depreciation through the overall user fee structure. Overall then, you had an income or loss before capital grants of about $377,000, and then a change in net position, a drawdown in net position of about $346,000. Again, very, very healthy water and sewer funds, but do monitor them from a long-term standpoint in terms of making sure that the rate structure is recovering the cost of delivering the potable water to the consumers. That concludes the very brief presentation I prepared for this evening's meeting, Mr. Mayor. I apologize that we weren't able to put anything up on the screen for the folks at home to be able to follow along as well, but I hope that the folks, the council members that are participating remotely, are able to follow along with that, so.
Well, our apology that we don't have that facility for this evening. We're kind of in a transition on some of our I T stuff right now, and...
Understand completely.
But thank you, thank you for coming. Does the council have any questions for Mr. Lance concerning his report? Hearing none, what are we looking for here, Becky?
Motion to accept.
Okay. May I will entertain a motion to accept the report as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alman Reblow, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Second by Alman Flurry. Questions or comments or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alman Porter.
Well, from what I've read on this, it looks like we still have a little bit of a problem with the library, but that's probably a discussion for another day, but it looks like there's still some issues down there that need to be taken a look at.
I would not disagree, and that their board needs to address that forthwith. There's been a gradual transition of us trying to get out from under, Beck.
I do know that they have recently hired an accountant to come in and help them with some of these issues because they've asked for some information from me, so that's a step in the right direction. I have had a meeting with Fred and Nick, our other auditor as well, with the library, so they're working on it.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Mr. Lance, thank you as always for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of the council.
Okay, under item B on finance and personnel, new business, we have the copier-printer contract request for proposal.
So every five, I'm sorry, so every five years, we put out a request for proposal for new copier lease agreements. It has been five years, and we've, fortunate enough this time, every single machine in the city is on this proposal. We've always, you know, one, you know, a couple are on a different cycle with a different company, and finally, we have all 10 machines together on the same proposal. So at this point, I would be recommending approval from Gordon Flesh. They will all be Canon products. We were very happy with their proposal. Like I mentioned in my letter, they recently acquired Boone County and has a contract with them. Our I T people who work for the county and help with the city are very pleased with their performance, the machines, their I T staff as well, so I'm looking for approval to proceed with a contract with Gordon Flesh.
May I have a motion to that effect, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alman Stevens, may I have a second? Alman Frank. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alman Stevens.
Who do we currently use at this time?
We currently use, I should have answered that, we currently use Marco. They were formerly Nexus, and then they were purchased by a larger company, Marco, still out of Rockford, just like Gordon Flesh is as well.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
Oh, I was just going to say, I had the opportunity to meet this guy, this gentleman, and he's very nice.
Okay, thank you. If there are, Alman Reblow?
I'm just curious, what was our previous cost for them, like, per month?
I don't have the exact number right there. I think I have on my sheet that it's going to be a little over $3,000 annually. Like I said, we're dealing with three different vendors right now. We have Gordon Flesh on one machine, we have Martin Business Group on one machine, and then the rest of them have been with Marco. So we've been dealing with three different contracts and three different prices. It'll definitely be a big savings, especially for, the biggest savings I noticed was the public works, workhorse that we have here in this building.
Okay, anybody else? All those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, thank you. Next up, under other, the first item that we have is, we've been, phones started ringing middle of last week about a billing practice that had been going on or informing the Greenview Estates residents that they were going to be required to have an account so that their bank accounts could be charged directly for their rental payments. So Attorney Drell and I talked about that and seemed to think that, you know, that's not right, because if that's not in the lease, it's not in the lease, and we're dealing with older folks who don't trust banks, a lot of them, and they don't want to give up their ability to write their checks. And so, following that, on Thursday, I called and I talked to Penelope out there. Lordis, who is the manager, was not available, and I told Penelope that we didn't feel like what they were doing was legal and that we would greatly appreciate who we needed to contact corporately to have that conversation. Lordis called me back on Friday morning and said that they were not going to pursue that course of action of charging those fees. Nancy Walker sent me another email today saying that the September and October bills had gone out with information on them that still supported that premise. It's my understanding that someone did post notices around Greenview over the weekend that they were not going to follow that practice. I called Lordis again today, she was not in her office, and I said if indeed you're going to charge these fees, I think it's $16 and something, for not using one of their account, their accounts that they established, and then $4.95, as I recall, is that right, Rory, for using a debit card? It's 2% to 3% when you use a credit card, and I take exception to that, too. The unfortunate thing is we have no standing to require them to not do this or that. The only thing that we could appoint them in the direction of the Attorney General's office to see if they indeed are overcharging or doing anything that might be construed as illegal, and I left that message with Penelope to talk to Lordis about, and Lordis was going to call me back, and I've not received that phone call yet. So we will continue to pursue that with Lordis and then with their upper management to let them know that that is a process that they need to take up next is the Attorney General's office. So hopefully, that will solve at least the issue of people having to pay the way that they say they have to pay, and they have acknowledged that from their attorneys, and I had that statement made directly to me on the phone, and I understand that there are notices that they posted around Greenview Estates relate to that also, that they're not going to follow that process. So hopefully, this gets ironed out to everybody's benefit, and that's all I have to say on that. Does anybody have any comments about that? Yes?
Yes, I'd gotten phone calls from people out there that, you know, that I know, my mother knows that they were quite unhappy about this, so that's why I asked to get it on the agenda, and it seemed like it might have leveled itself out a little bit then.
Yeah, I, you know, we, again, we had no legal standing, but after our discussion, we decided that we'd fire a shot across their bow and see if they responded, and they did, and so we're happy for that. Okay, next up, we have under item B, 1,000 Natty Street, the window replacement. I believe Kip's on the call, are you not, sir?
I am, sir.
Okay, do you want to present, please?
Thank you, your honor. As part of the partnership formed between the city of Belvidere and the regional land bank, the city of Belvidere, through litigation with the land bank, has begun to acquire blighted properties throughout the city, recently 407 Madison and 1,000 Natty. As part of the agreement, the city is able to use grant funds from the Illinois Housing Development Authority to rehab the houses and in turn transfer the property to the land bank to sell or further rehab to fill the coffers for further litigation if needed for other blighted properties. In your packet, you will find three bids from Kobe Co., Window World, and Slaton Construction to replace the existing windows at 1,000 Natty with new vinyl windows. This will allow, hopefully allow, the land bank to ask a higher price for the home. This money will be paid from the Illinois Housing Grant, and I recommend the low bid from Slaton Construction to begin the window replacement.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alman Reblow, may I have a second, please?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Alman Stevens. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion? Yes, Alman Porter.
Well, I guess I would have to ask, if we're going to spend $11,000 to replace the windows, is that really going to be a good return on the investment? I mean, how much is the price, asking price, going to be able to go up for that?
We're not spending anything, it's coming out of a grant. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, Alman Freeman.
So Kip, for these three bids, I've purchased windows for two homes through Window World, and they all come with a lifetime transferable replacement policy, no matter what happens, if somebody throws a rock through it, somebody hits a baseball through it, they're 100% lifetime replaced. I like the fact that Window World also does their estimate by itemizing their things rather than this Slaton Roofing, which just says, "Remove and Replace Windows," with double hung vinyl. Is it worth the extra $800 to get a lifetime replacement that we can transfer to the new owners, or no, in your opinion?
I, I, the bids were pretty close, as you can see. The grant is running out, I believe we have to have the invoice paid sometime in November, so I just thought practice usually from council was to take the low bid. I am in favor with a lifetime warranty from Window World or Kobe Co., or I'm sure, or I'm not sure if Slaton would do a lifetime warranty, but I don't, I don't object to that suggestion.
There's no questions or comments? Yes, Alman Frank.
Is that something Kip can look into, just to put our mind at ease?
Well, like I said, we got to get, we got to get these windows in, otherwise the grant's going to run out. I was kind of hoping that we could make a decision tonight and then bring it to council next week and get the contract awarded.
Okay, but you can ask in the meantime and then bring it to council next week?
Ask what?
If they do lifetime replacement of the windows.
Sure.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, a motion now on the floor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
I'm sorry, your honor?
Yes.
So are we, are we voting on going through with the bid from Slaton Construction, or are we modifying this to have one, whether it's Kobe Co. or Window World, that does have a lifetime replacement?
Well, that would require response from someone on the council to so propose that. So, you know, as, as, has been the procedure in the past, we go with the low bid. If you don't want to go with the low bid, make a motion to amend the motion to go with one of the other ones with a lifetime warranty.
Snow has a question.
Yes, Alman Snow.
We, we don't know that, because none of the propaganda in the paperwork alludes that I can see that it does have lifetime transferable warranties on the other two in question, and we don't know that Slaton doesn't provide that same deal, but if we vote on Slaton to move this forward and Kip can get back with us, we can always amend at city council next week to pick the other vendors, correct?
That would be correct. And I think that's kind of what we were talking about, so, again, all those in favor...
I'm sorry, if you said something, I didn't hear you, mayor.
That's what we, was really just proposed, that he would check back and see and bring it back to council and so inform, at which time we could amend if we wanted to the vendor contract. So what we're voting on is, the motion on the floor is to approve the low bid. Kip will inquire of Kobe Co. and of Window World about the lifetime warranty, as well as for Slaton to see if they have a warranty and what it might be, and re-enhance the cost differentials in his presentation to council next week, so at least we'll have been moving forward, and we can always amend the motion to another vendor next week. So, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, which is the lowest bid motion to Slaton, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kip, and we'll take this up again next week. Under item C, municipal parking lot, formerly the Manly Lot, Attorney Drella?
In your packets this evening is another contract in relation to this transaction, it's an option of purchase. You'll recall that tabled at council, which will be before you next week, and tabled there is an ordinance approving a contract to sell the former Manly Lot to the community building, as well as the actual agreement itself, which is part of that ordinance. At some point in the past, the council asked that we approach the community building to determine whether they would agree to an option of repurchase the lot in the future if in fact they're going to sell it to a third party. It's a right of first refusal essentially. This has been sitting on the back burner as we were waiting for the community building, frankly, and their board to sign off on both the option of purchase as well as the actual contract to sell the land to them, because I didn't feel like going back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. So, they have approved first the contract to purchase the property, that's before you next week. They have also approved the right of first refusal or the option of purchase, which is in your packets today. And essentially, what this option of purchase does is it says that if they're going to sell it to a third party at some point in the future, are looking to sell it, they'll give us notice of that first. We have 30 days within which to exercise a right of first refusal to repurchase the Manly Lot at $400,000, which is the price they're giving us for the lot now, so it'd basically be a swap at that point. What I'd recommend, if this is the route that the council wants to go, we really don't need to take action on this tonight, I wanted you to see it. When it comes up at council next week, when you take this, the ordinance off the table to sell the lot to the community building, we'll amend that ordinance to include both authorizing that agreement as well as this agreement. So we can handle that at council next week, it's cleaner that way, it'll all be in one ordinance, it'll be easier to find the future, and it'll all be together. So this is the option of purchase that was asked for, they've agreed to it. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, everybody good with handling it next week all at once? Okay, everybody good with handling it next week, all at once? Keep it clean and neat? Great. Thank you, Attorney Drella. Next up, under item D, Public Works Water System Skated Generator. Director Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, your honor. Memo in your packet, our water department's skater system lost power during the last windstorm. In order to ensure a continuous source of power, we need to create a separate electrical circuit with a compact generator and an automatic transfer switch at the water department. And we've received three proposals to complete this work. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Morse Electric, in the amount of $12,126 for the installation of a separate electrical circuit with a compact generator and automatic transfer switch for the water department's skater system, and this work will be paid for from line item number 615810-6000.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Stevens?
I'm just, with the price difference, making sure that they're all doing about the same kilowatt generator and stuff.
Yes, they're all comparable equipment and process.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Arivolo?
I wonder if the compact generator lasts 12 hours, eight hours, if they have to switch automatically?
The compact generator will be gas-powered, so it'll last as, as long as it's required.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the motion now on the floor. Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Mickey?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Ken in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Anderson. Next up, big item of the night, under E, the residential development incentives. After our, about six weeks of conversation concerning this issue, Attorney Drella drafted some proposed ordinances for your edification, and that we will discuss tonight, and to keep everything on a straight path, I'll have Attorney Drella direct the discussion, explaining what each one means and how it works. And then, of course, when we come to the point of making motions and seconds, there are opportunities to make amendments, or further discussion, and that'll be in the hands of the council. So, Alderman Drella, please proceed. Oh, excuse me, Attorney Drella, you keep sitting in the alderman's seat, I just, you know, I know you want to be an alderman, so.
Oh, no, thank you. Given the discussion that occurred during public comment, there's obviously some confusion, hopefully not the council, but obviously in the community, as to what's been discussed so far. One thing to keep in mind, and one of the things that makes this somewhat complicated as discussion, is the city does not have one impact fee. There's no less than five true impact fees, and there's actually other fees that we have out there as well. And as I've explained before, the, and actually Alderman Snow had questioned this previously, privately with me, impact fees are codified in two different locations within our own city code, depending on what kind of fee you're talking about. The conservation district, the school district, the park district, impact fees are actually codified within your subdivision code. They're also contained with annexation agreements that we've entered into, at least since I've been the city attorney, circa 2003. Nobody's talked at this point about waiving those fees or eliminating those fees. There's some behind the scenes, should we look at doing that, but the conversation we've had so far has not addressed those fees. The direction, to me, was not to address those fees at this point. The only fees I was directed to look at, as far as impact fees go, are the police, public works, fire, and city administrative fees, which are by far the smallest number of the impact fees that are out there. And those are actually codified in section, in Article 15, I believe it is, it's Section 15 dash 255 of the municipal code. So, the first ordinance that you have in front of you in your packets is an ordinance repealing Section 15 dash 25 of the Belvedere Municipal Code. That would only eliminate fire, public works, police, and city administrative impact fees. And keep in mind, those fees do not have any support, nor are they authorized by state statute, they're solely imposed through our authority in annexation agreements. So, that's the first thing to keep in mind. That ordinance, as it is written, is a blanket repeal of those fees for any development in the city, regardless of where it's at, who's doing the development, whether it's Mr. and Mrs. Smith that happened to buy one lot in Farmington, or a developer that's coming in and doing it for a larger scale project, Mr. Howlett. One of the reasons I drafted it that way is because the majority of our annexation agreements have that fee built into them, but provides that the owner of the lot will pay the fee, then in effect, at the time a building permit is issued. If the fee's not there, it's not in effect, it wouldn't be charged. If it's still in the books, we would charge it. So, that's the reason for the blanket repeal of, of that impact fee. And again, it's only those four fees, it's not schools or anything like that. The second ordinance actually, and I was, I was caught in a quandary, quite frankly, trying to figure out the best way to, to accomplish what the committee had directed me to do. So, the first direction was to look at possibly repealing the fee that I just talked about, again, the, the public works, fire, police, and admin fee. The second direction was to look at the possibility of waiving building permit fees, as well as the possibility of a property tax abatement. And in my mind, that created a little bit more of a, of a bigger issue, because I didn't know if the council wanted to do that blanketly throughout the city. Any new lot that's developed, no matter who it is, gets free building permit fees, or gets the waiver on the property taxes. We talked in terms of four years, that seemed to be the way to go, but again, and that's what's in this document, but again, that's subject to change, it's up to the council. I came down on the side, because we are a home rule unit of government since 2010, we have the authority to enter into what are called developer agreements. The city can enter into agreement with a developer by which we agree to certain waivers of fees, they agree to certain ownership restrictions, or certain, quite frankly, design criteria. So, what I did is I put together an agreement, and I honestly have not shown this to the developer in this case, Mr. Howlett, this is simply for discussion purposes of this council. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Howlett, but this is blindsiding you. The agreement I drafted was, was a 12-year agreement in this case. And the reason why it was a 12-year agreement is because the number of lots we're looking at, and the, the suggestion of four-year property tax abatement. The idea being, if he does four two-unit buildings a year, it'll take him 10 years or so to build it out. He may get it done quicker, that's fine, but it gives enough time for that to happen. The second thing it does, is it locks him into owning those parcels, or each of those units, at least for the 12 years of the agreement. Can't sell them. He's represented the council that he is going to own these and rent them out. Some of the concerns I heard was, what if he turns around and sells it, and we don't know what we're getting into? It locks him into owning those units for at least 12 years, and, and handle them on a rental basis. The other thing it does is it, if he doesn't do that, obviously, the abatements go away. Not only for that one lot, but for all the lots, they just go away. That's kind of the carrot and the stick there. The second thing it does is it requires him to construct the units or the buildings pursuant, or substantially similar to, and I don't have the pretty pictures, I'll have to get those from Gina and from Mr. Howlett, but design standards that we would approve, essentially. So, he can't say, okay, I'm going to take this and put up a shack, he'll have to build essentially what he's proposing he's going to build. And if he doesn't, he doesn't get the incentives. What it does provide, however, is what the committee had talked about, that if he complies with those aspects of it, there would be a four-year property tax abatement on the increment, on the increased taxes. He'd still have to pay whatever he's paying now, which isn't, hopefully, a whole lot, because they're vacant lots. But the increase in the value of the lot, we have to check back to him each year for that, for that difference. And it also does waive the building permit fees for the units that he'd be developing under that agreement. So, if the council wishes to move forward, it doesn't have to do both, it can do one or the other, it can add or subtract, it could do this blanketly through the whole city as far as the agreement goes, or it could do it in just this one case. It really is up to you, but we were so all over the place during earlier discussions, I thought, good idea to have something in writing, so you know what you're looking at, what we're talking about.
So, Attorney Drella, it would seem from your presentation that the first thing we want to do is offer a motion for an ordinance repealing Section 1525 of the Belvedere Municipal Code, is that correct?
Sure.
I'd offer, may I have a motion to that effect?
Snow will make that motion to repeal the impact fees.
Motion by Snow, may I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Second by Arivolo. Questions, comments, further discussion? Alderman Burton, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm going to be voting no on any type of discounts for this project, because it was not introduced well. It has not been presented well. I feel Mr. Morris had a lot of good comments, and I have felt extremely pressured in this decision, so I'll be voting no on any breaks.
Alderman Porter?
I have a comment.
Just a moment, Alderman Freeman, Alderman Porter has a comment. Alderman Porter, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. A couple of things I'll bring up again, what I mentioned before, is, to me, it just makes no sense to be waiving these fees when we're facing a $38 million stormwater problem, that we're still trying to figure out how we're going to pay for that. And also, another thing I thought of since then was, it makes me, makes me nervous that if this person, this developer cannot afford to pay these fees, how is he going to afford to, you know, finish the project? What if he gets halfway through the project and runs out of money, and then we're stuck with a bigger problem? That, that kind of makes me nervous, too, so I'll be voting no also.
Okay. Any other questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
I, I had a comment.
Yes, Alderman Freeman, I'm sorry, please proceed.
So, my position is, pretty much, you only need to read the September 25th edition of the Boone County Journal opinion page, to sum it up, where I feel, you know, waiving these fees and abating taxes is not in the best interest of our constituents, who have entrusted us to oversee how their taxes are spent and collected. Other municipalities may have eliminated these fees in their effort to sell their land to developers for housing in order to drive growth. But in our case, the lots are already owned, and only need the homes to be built. The realtor who spoke earlier in council is correct, there is a shortage of homes for sale here. So, these developers should be chomping at the bit to build, knowing that they will sell quickly at a substantial profit. Reducing or eliminating the fees or abating taxes is not going to lower the price of the homes for the buyers. It's only going to put more profit in the pockets of these out-of-town developers. And although Mr. Howlett's townhomes may not substantially impact our services, other single-family developments may. And what we do for one, we will ultimately do for all. You know, I'd rather help residents who have come to us for help through no fault of their own, when their homes have suffered basement sewage backups, and flooding, and they've all been refused by the council, and the mayor's reasoning was, once you open the door for one, you open the floodgates for everybody to be coming down here with their handout. And I have a letter dated July 8th, to Mayor Chamberlain, from Michael Brown, the director of communications from Lend EDU, and he is basically saying that Belvedere has been nationally recognized by Lend EDU as one of the most budget-friendly cities in the country for renters. Specifically, Belvedere had an average annual rent cost of $9,876, with a median household income of $58,709, for a rent-to-income ratio of 16.82%. It's generally recommended that a renter's rent should cost no more than 30% of their annual income, so these numbers speak to Belvedere's proximity to high-paying jobs relative to the affordable housing in the area. Belvedere's low rent-to-income ratio ranked 232 in the country, and number 14 in the state. It, it's, it's basically saying, you know, Belvedere is a great place for young adults to rent an apartment or home, because the availability of high-paying jobs makes rent only a small portion of their budget, which means the opportunity to save will be there for the taking. I fear that Mr. Howlett, who thinks he's going to build two-bedroom townhomes and rent them out for $1,500 a month, is only going to drive up the cost of rent everywhere else in town. Everybody else is going to say, oh, he's getting $1,500 a month for a two-bedroom unit, I can get, you know, even though his might be a little nicer than mine, I can get 12 for mine, instead of the seven I'm currently getting. So, I think it's a bad idea. I know that Mr. Howlett purchased and built up the Riverbend subdivision back right before 2008, when the real estate crashed. But you have to figure, a lot of homeowners lost a lot of equity, too, and they're not seeking the city to supplement their losses. As far as I'm concerned, the recession is over, our president insists the economy is doing great, so there is no reason to supplement these developers, they should actually be knocking down the door to build. That's all I have to say. I'll be voting no.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay.
Alderman Snow has something.
Just a moment, please. You have two in front of you. Alderman Stevens first, then Alderman Flurry, then Alderman Snow.
To me, given these kind of giveaways, the only way I would vote for any kind of abatement on fees is if they were going to bring jobs to this community, like a factory coming in, or another store coming in, that's going to bring in sales tax money. Those people need deals, and I feel that that's the only type of stuff that we would, should really give a lot of considerance for, special deals.
Okay. Alderman Flurry?
My question's about the impact fees, as we talked about before. I understand we're looking at three different things, but I'm just focusing on the impact piece. In regards to the impact fees, they're originally put in place because the taxes, because they're paid on a rear, is going to keep up with the growth, but at this point, the taxes are covering the modest building at this point?
Yes, that would be correct. So, on average, for example, last year, fiscal 2020, there were only seven homes built, 19, six homes. 18 was a big number of 14. 11 the year before that, four the year before that. This year, we have three new homes, that's it. Gives you an idea of what the volume is, and, and how much money we have coming in for impact fees.
Right. And so, I guess my question is, in regards to, again, there's three different things on the table there, but the first one is those impact fees. You know, last week, they talked about Boone County was considering either reducing their impact fees or getting rid of them, so obviously, we're a part of Boone County, so it seems like we should go in that same direction to be an incentive. I understand that as we go forward, we may not want to handle this one specific housing development, but I think overall, as an impact fee, repealing just those four seems to be an incentive for everyone to come here, and I don't think it impacts the constituents.
Just a minute, a couple of quick comments, based on Mr. Alderman Flurry's comment. Number one, we're only talking about one impact fee at this point, again, it's police, fire, and public works, that's all one. The county does not have that fee. They, according to Mr. Carlisle, are going to be discussing, and I have not confirmed this with the county itself, but Mr. Carlisle indicated they may be discussing their school, park, conservation district fees, which is not what we're discussing right now. Two different things, the ones they may be looking at are much bigger ticket items, though, frankly, they're the, they're the real money in the room.
They're the, they're the real money in the room.
Alderman Snow?
Okay, a couple of things. The, one thing that I'd like to throw out there is the fact that my understanding, based on emails that I've had today, that if the city exercises not to collect the impact fees for the school, park, and conservation districts, then nobody's on the hook to have to pay them later or come back on the city to have to pay for them. Therefore, it would be a reasonable dollar incentive for developer, builder, home builder to participate if we waive the annexation fee. The other is, I get everybody's point about not giving away the farm and trying to potentially control, and that the fact that it is somewhat disconcerting that with the market the way it is, that there isn't more of these lots being developed. But obviously, it isn't occurring, and I'm thinking that waiving the impact fees and eliminating it until there's new subdivisions that need to annex into the city and then address those at that point. But for these existing subdivisions, I think it would be, in generic terms, prudent to waive that fee and see if we can get those lots built out in the shorter term in order to help the community grow and fuel the tax machine as it progresses with having those houses built.
Additional questions or comments at this point? Yes?
Yeah, I just have a comment. Originally, I was on board with trying to do something to, to help this developer, but after talking to some of my constituents, I've actually, don't really think that maybe this isn't the answer for all these fees that we're going to try to give up, so I don't think I can support it at this time.
Okay. Anybody else got anything? Yes, Alderman Arivolo?
We have to figure a way to stimulate the economy, at least our local economy. We will have, right now, there's a trend, right, with COVID-19, everybody's are able to work from home. Thing there was a, back in the day, there was a, people from rural areas going to the cities. Now, I think there's a trend going from cities back to rural areas. We want to have people my age, youth, to want to live and stay here, so those taxes stay here. Because now, it's easy now, working from home with internet. Let's just try to keep the people here, the brains, IT people, especially IT, they can do it from home. Building webs can be done from home. Almost anything, Google, I think now is doing mostly everything from home. Let's try to stay positive. If this becomes a problem in the future, we can always put these shackles back on and put impact fees, and let that be for concerns for the future people on this council to determine that. But right now, let's stimulate growth in building right now, because those building materials can be bought from local, I think RJ lumber, and, so I'd see a lot of positive more than negative. And that's just my opinion.
Anybody else? Hearing none? All those in favor? Alderman Frank, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say that I got a couple of calls, too, and they said that it was basically more about the fees, like permit for, people said that we have to still pay for roofing permits, they have to pay for fencing permits, and so they didn't think that was fair. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Hearing no more comments. All those in favor of approval of motion now on the floor, will name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay.
Porter?
No.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow? Stevens?
No.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
No.
Fleury?
Aye.
Frank?
This is for the impact fees, right?
Yes.
Aye.
Freeman?
No.
McGee?
No.
Five in favor?
Well, then that leaves it up to the mayor to break the tie, and I vote aye. And I have a comment also. I understand that people who have already paid for something think everybody should continue to pay for everything. But I will recommend this notion to our taxpayers. We all paid for all the infrastructure, millions and millions of dollars, to develop these subdivisions. Streets, water and sewer, new wells. We built $100 million worth of new schools. We are down over 800 kids in enrollment in our schools, and they're in the younger grades. They're building all around us. Loves Park, Machesney Park, Rockton. We've seen a new kind of home being built. There is a demand for, you can't find a condo. You can't find a townhome. They're off the market as soon as they get built, and as soon as one comes up for sale. So, understand that I see both sides of this. But at the same time, how are we going to solve this problem? How are we going to grow? And the idea that we vote down increases in the levy every year, and yet our costs is, our cost of doing business as a city goes up 5% to 7% a year, between payroll, pensions, cost of all of the materials and services that we use. At some point, we're going to hit the wall, and when we hit the wall, it's going to be why these were put into place in the first place, so we had an opportunity to grow and control that growth, to pay for services as the growth progressed. We have no growth. We have no growth. And so for us to move forward and share the load, the way that taxes work is, everybody in the community pays taxes, and they pay their fair share of the taxes to support, as, as Mr. Morris said, to pay for schools, to pay for roads, to pay for streets, to pay for salaries. This, the comment was made, this doesn't produce jobs. It does produce jobs. It produces jobs in the construction industry. It produces sales tax. It produces sales tax in a number of different businesses here. When people move into the community, they spend their incomes in the community. So, the grocery stores, at the jewelry stores, at the bars. So, if we don't encourage people to come here, we're, we're investing in our own demise. And so, different circumstances at different times in the history make for having to do different things. And these impact fees were necessary at the time to control growth, so that we could pay for the roads and pay for the infrastructure, but it's already paid for, already been here. And so, you know, I think it's, it's a good idea to try to move forward. And yes, we need to treat everybody the same that comes forward, that wants to build, with the caveat that we want to see what the project is, what it looks like, what the parameters are, that it's built to code, and that it's built to attract people that are going to be good renters or good buyers, and that are going to hopefully bring small, have small children, and bring people to the community. Every day, we have between 1,200 and 1,500 young professionals that come to this community and work in all of our professional offices, our banks, our clinics, and they go home and they live on the east side of Rockford, on Mulford, on Riverside, on Bell School and the apartment complexes. Given a choice, because I've talked to many of them when they're here for stroll and different things that we do, they live here in a heartbeat. We don't have any housing for them. And so, you know, I'm glad that we have an opportunity, we have a divided council, and yes, I cast the deciding vote on this issue. That's all I have to say on that. So what's up next, sir?
As I mentioned in the introduction of this concept, this discussion this evening, the second part of the concept was the waiver of building permit fees, abatement of property taxes, which I had drafted a potential developer agreement. Again, the developer in this case, Mr. Howlett, has not seen this. If the council wishes to go forward, sorry, if the committee wishes to go forward with this kind of a concept, it would be appropriate to have a motion to forward the agreement to city council. At that point, I can share with Mr. Howlett, see if he's agreeable to, and if he wishes to move forward on those kinds of, of terms. Of course, the committee could also, if it chose, modify the concept if it wanted to as well. So I guess I'd, to keep it clean and follow Robert's rules, it might be appropriate to have a motion to forward the agreement to city council with a second, and then we can always discuss it, and I vote it up or down.
May I have a motion, may I have a motion to that effect? To forward to city council for discussion, alteration, whatever we need to do. Approval.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Arivolo? Have a second, please.
I'll second.
Second by Fleury. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion on the floor? Alderman Burton, you have the floor.
Snow has a comment.
Just a moment, Mr. Snow, please.
Yeah, I just have one comment. I think there are like two questions on the floor right now, or, or in the air. You know, if it would be nice to have some apartments there, you know, that's, you know, yes or no, but the other question is, does the city want to pay for it? And that's just the issue here. That's all I want to say.
Okay. Alderman Snow?
Okay, again, I was in favor of eliminating the impact fees, which hopefully will pass next week. But the, I'm, I'm not a big fan of cher, no offense, bad term, but cherry picking that the Riverbend gets the tax abatement. I'm not a fan of the tax abatement at all. That's a, that, to me, is a nowhere deal. Not going to go for that. As far as incentivizing the ability to stimulate growth and building, I would throw out there potentially, after we get past this particular item as it's presented, that we look at putting a, cutting the new construction, brand-new construction permit fee maybe in half for the next three years, until January of, I think, '24, or '23, excuse me, to see if that doesn't stimulate growth, so that we get, we encompass both home builders and commercial people, to incentivize them, because we have plenty of people that are attempting to build in new commercial stuff, and they should not necessarily go unrecognized and maybe have some incentive to participate. So, I'll be voting no at this point for this motion, specifically for the Riverbend permitting fee waiving and the tax abatement.
Well, Mr. Snow, this is not just for Riverbend. Well, this particular agreement for Mr. Howlett, but the concept, if I may, Attorney Drellala, the concept is, any builder can come forward, and we would draft this kind of development agreement based on their development. The motion on the floor is to forward this to council for further discussion, where amendments can be made to tailor this appropriately, as you just offered, Mr. Snow, to say, okay, no, we're not going to do the property tax part of it, but we will do this part or that part. As far as your comment about we should make this available also to commercial building, with commercial building, we have enterprise zone, we have opportunity zone, and we have a number of tax incentives already in place, but certainly, any project that comes forward from a developer always comes to the city council for definition of what terms that we are going to approve for that development. So I would ask you to, to change your vote, Mr. Snow, and vote this up to city council, and then offer as an amendment to it when it reaches city council, that we do not include the property tax abatement. Because we can tailor this, as I said before, a couple of weeks ago, this is a proposal, and it's up to the city council to tailor the proposal to fit exactly what is appropriate in your minds, and for your constituents, and for the city. So nothing is set in concrete, it's a discussion, and the discussion can mold what we feel is in the best interest of everyone.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
And I guess my comment on that would be the fact that what's good for this subdivision would be good for the rest of them, and for all the other developments, and I still don't know that with all the incentives that are out there for the commercial, not everything falls within all these zones that's talked about. So, the aspect of giving it to this entity, this particular project, I think everybody, whether it's out on Distillery Road and everything else, needs to be given the same treatment, and not just, again, trying to tailor or pigeonhole people into having to come up and jump through hoops as to what the current administration thinks is suitable construction. We already have codes, there's possibly, depending on the subdivisions, minimum requirements already in place. Nobody, generally speaking, is going to come in and build a shack, because the return on it is not worth it. It's worthy to build a reasonable house that's going to sell at a higher dollar than to build a shack, and we're not talking about, you know, a tremendous boatload of tract housing, where it's just, you know, cookie cutters. And I work in that industry, and we, the houses are very nice, but the fact is, I don't see where we need to tailor this just for him. We either, you know, it's for everybody and not specific toward the Riverbend-Howlett project.
And you can make that.
So I'll be voting no.
You can make that amend, okay. Okay.
Briefly, first off, we can make amendments tonight if you want to, it doesn't have to wait till next week. If you want to make a motion to amend to, for example, take out the property tax abatement from this developer agreement, and forward with that change made next week, you could do that. The suggestion by Alderman Snow that we make this a, a broader, just cut permit fees in half for everybody going forward, the motion on the floor specifically redevelopment agreement with Mr. Howlett, so that would not be an appropriate amendment for this agreement. However, when we're done with this agreement this evening, we're still talking about residential development incentives. If Alderman Snow wanted to make that motion, we're done with this discussion, he certainly could do that tonight as well.
And I most likely will, when that, we get to that point.
Alderman Snow, would you like to make an amendment to preclude the property tax portion of the agreement for Mr. Howlett? And we'll amend to?
No, because I'm going to vote the whole thing down, so.
Okay.
I'm not in favor of any of it, not waiving all of his fees, because that's what it says, and I'm not in favor of the property tax abatement. So no, I'm going to vote the whole thing down.
May I ask the city attorney a question at that point, then? So, if Mr. Howlett's development agreement gets voted down, does he still not qualify for the abatement of the, of the, the impact fees as we voted up with the first?
No, that was voted, well, assuming it passes council, anybody in the city would, they don't apply anymore.
Okay. Additional questions or comments? Yes?
Attorney Drellala, would we put like a timeframe on the impact fees, like a year or two, just to see what the growth would be?
I'm sorry, the, the, we're not talking about impact fees in this at all right now. That was the previous discussion. This is only, maybe I misunderstood the question, this only pertains to building permit fees and property tax abatements, and the property tax is only for four years for each, each building. The agreement is a total of 12 years long.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
I, I'd like to hear from other Aldermen, because obviously, we have plenty of people out there, there's only been three of us talking on this particular deal. Does not anybody else have anything to say?
Alderman Frank?
Well, I guess I would say to dad, Snow, I sort of agree with you to a degree about the, shoot, I'm trying to think what I'm trying to say. I've just lost my train of thought, sorry.
Okay.
Fees, the fees. What I was going to say about the fees is that, you know, we're still going to have to have KIP do inspections, right? And so, we would have And so, we would have to pay him to do it, even though the fees have been waived.
That's true. Except for plumbing inspections, the state does those, we don't, there's no charge.
That's all I wanted to say. Sorry about my train of thought.
And these do not entertain waiving the connection fees for sewer and water at all. So.
I'll talk.
Go ahead.
So my position is no on all of it, the impact fees, the tax abatements, the building fees, all of it. I do not think that we need to supplement this. Like I said, the recession's over, we don't have enough housing here, these developers know that as soon as they build, they will sell. The savings is not passed on to the buyer, and all you're doing is making the developers and the realtors rich on the backs of the taxpayers. Why would I add that, you know, if you want growth here, then we need to focus, and I would tell growth dimensions, I know they're all about industrial, but I see Belvedere turning into an industrial park, and I think that we should be focusing on commercial and retail. You can tell me all day that we have things here, but if I want a new pair of shoes, I want to buy a new outfit, I got to go to Rockford. If I want to have a nice steak dinner, my options are Coach's Corner, and no offense, they have great steaks, but they're a bar, or Applebee's, or I'm going to Rockford. We basically have nothing to attract the people that Alderman Arivolo says want to be here. Why would they want to be here when they can work here and then go home to Rockford where they have shopping and restaurants and nightlife? It's just a no-brainer. If you want growth, you need quality of life for your residence, which is retail and commercial. That's all I have to say.
I'll bite my tongue. Anybody else have any comments? Hearing none, yes, Alderman Rivalo.
For Ed Snow, I understand what he's getting from, I agree with a lot of what he says. I don't think we're showing favoritism to one particular developer. I think we're trying to push for other developers to have the same incentives to come and develop. And that's, I agree to a certain extent what he says, and that's all I really got to say.
Anybody else before we take a vote? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the motion now on the floor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
No.
Stevens.
No.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Brereton.
No.
Flurry.
Nay.
Frank.
No.
Freeman.
No.
McGee.
Nay.
Porter.
No.
Two in favor?
Motion is lost. Well, ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to the end of our very interesting agenda this evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'd make a motion that we look at, make a motion to cut the building permit fees in half for new construction, both residential and commercial, for the next three years.
Do we need not to put that on the agenda to vote on it? Mr. Drell.
The, as we all know, the open meetings act requires that a public body, committee hold, is a public body, must have on the agenda an item, punctures to be voted. In other words, you can discuss anything you want to, you can't vote on something unless it's on the agenda. On the agenda is residential development incentives, so obviously, Alderman Snow's recommendation, as it pertains to residential, would be appropriate for this evening. If he wants to start including things like industrial or commercial that is not on the agenda, I suggest that he comes back to a future committee meeting when that can be placed on the agenda.
I'll amend my motion to residential construction, new residential construction.
Would you restate your motion, please?
I would make a motion that for the next three-plus years, and doing, I think, in January of '24, January 1st, that we reduce our building permit for new construction, residential, by half.
May I have a motion to that effect, or a second? Please.
I'll second that.
I have a question. Is this for, is this for single-family homes, or is this for patios? Is this for decks?
This is for new construction, not piecemeal decks, roofs, siding, driveways. This is for a new home, empty lot, empty building, or demo of a whole building and reconstructing a new structure.
So this would be for single-family homes and duplexes and townhomes, anything less than three units?
I don't know why we'd have to reduce it, have it limited by three units.
Well, once you get, once you get into three units or over, it comes into commercial.
Well, then we can go that route, and I would ask that that be put on the agenda for the next committee, to discuss the commercial slash industrial.
I'm just trying to get clarifications. Yeah, you're talking residential housing, single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, multifamily units.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Please proceed. Go ahead.
Kip, how much, how much are those permits now?
The fee structure is based on the cost of construction, so for Mr. Howlett's townhomes, I believe the average cost was around $2,000 a unit, and that's based on $200,000, the cost of construction. So, if you would cut that in half, it would break that down to about $1,000 a permit fee.
So that would be comparable to a $200,000 house built in a subdivision as well?
Correct.
Okay.
On average, the single-family homes between 1,700 and 1,800 square feet are averaging $1,300 to $1,400 in permit fees. And I would like to add that these fees haven't changed since 2006.
Madam Secretary, we have a.
So we have not increased our fees in.
We have not.
14 years.
Correct.
Are we finished with that? So, Madam Secretary, we have a motion, correct? We did not record a second yet, did we?
I don't, is Snow the one making the?
Making the motion.
Arivolo made a second.
Okay.
Arivolo, we have a second. Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Snow.
Yes.
Stevens.
No.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Brereton.
No.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
No.
Freeman.
No.
McGee.
Nay.
Porter.
No.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Four in favor?
Mr. Snow, your motion is lost.
Thank you.
So, that brings us to the end of the meeting for this evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Rivalo, may I have a second, please? By Alderman Porter, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Thank you, we are now adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.